Thank you for coming, six o'clock. To get this underway. The Venues and Markets Committee. And we start off with 17423. Declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests. You've got anything? Good. And 17523, apologies for absence.
These have been received from councillors Brindle and Brooks.
It's all good.
Thank you very much. And 17623 minutes, confirm the minutes of the former venues and comms committee meeting held on 8th of March 2023, which were received by full council on 28th of March 2023 as a true record and signed initial by the committee chairman. Need to agree the accuracy of the minutes. Well, Seansall wasn't on the committee then. And the majority of the people here weren't on it.
We're small.
Yeah. You're always there. So you're proposing and stepping in, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Well, just go. I don't know, I've got to be English. You are just test. 17723, financial update. To receive the venues and markets financial report for the first quarter, April to June 23. Do you, David, have a map?
Yeah. So, so we've at the end of the first quarter. And unfortunately, I have to admit, it's not good reading in certain areas. Certainly our three main income streams, which are room hire, tea room and bar fees, are all down to, down on budget. What I would say is, looking back to last year, the first quarter showed a similar trend. We were down from the very first month on the bar income. But by the end of year, we were, I think, six thousand pounds over that target. So I think at the moment, you know, do we need to press the panic button? Not on, certainly not on the income side. Because I think, you know, put it into perspective, one good bar event would recoup that deficit. Having said that, I would say that there is a marked trend. Just analysing some of the, some of the income events, the bar events, that people are spending less per head. And that's very evident in the Guildhall Tea Room as well. Last year, we were really pleased. As we progressed through the year, the curve was always pretty much upward bound.
Can you put on this?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, so the tea room income curve was on the upward bound all year through. And suddenly this year, it's, it's taken a bit of a dive in terms of income. Again, we, that's partly because people are just spending less per head. But also, to be fair, we've had a couple of issues in terms of, we've had two weeks so far where we've had to close because of the scaffolding most recently. And another one with blocked drains that caused issues where we had to get in and shut down for those, for that period. But hopefully, we can pull these back as we did last year. So I'm looking forward to the second, second quarter where we can try and turn things around. In terms of expenditure, let's just move on the next slide for Chris's benefit. What we also can see there is bar purchases are quite high. And again, the market is so volatile at the moment. In August, in August of this year, we've been informed of another 3.4% on our, on our beer supplies. So we have to make sure that we keep, or I keep, very up to date with trying to rectify those prices, although keeping a balance in terms of, you know, we don't want to detract from people actually spending at the bar because it's so expensive. But at the moment, I think we, we can afford to absorb those, not absorb, but put the prices up in August to take care of the, for the additional increases. Repairs and maintenance are the big, the big one. And again, five double two zero, that's, that's a lot up on, on actually the annual budget. And the reason for that is because, again, in the first quarter, it seems as if, you know, we're constantly in crisis management. We've had issues with freezers, there have been unplanned power cuts that have, you know, caused issues with our fridges and freezers to the point where we've had to have major repairs done on our freezer. It's caused issues in terms of the tea room operation. But also, we've had to make some repairs, mostly repairs on our sound system in the Carnegie. There was a constant buzzing and it'd been happening for so long that we were actually getting complaints from some of our hirers. We've rectified some of it in terms of, we really do need to check the equipment that they're plugging into it, which has been one of the issues. But we've spent probably about fifteen hundred pounds on getting that sorted. And we took the advantage of also moving the projector screen while the, while the contractors were in, which means that's a lot more beneficial in terms of what we offer to hirers in the future. So there are some mitigating circumstances of why that's high. But again, it's, I, I need to be more vigilant in terms of understanding these price increases and keeping on top of that because that is a critical factor. They're going wild, month to month, week to week. Any questions?
Terry. Yeah, thank you for that, David. Thank you for circulating it in advance. Obviously, we had finance committee last night, so I asked a few questions there, so I won't repeat them. But I didn't ask about repairs and maintenance because I guess you'd explain that today. So that is really useful because if we're only three months in and we've spent more than three times the yearly budget, that is a concern. But you can see two of the costs detailed on the line there. But I think it might be useful if we could maybe circulate to the committee a list of what that eight thousand pound assist of, just to have a better understanding.
To be fair, sorry to interrupt, Terry, but to be fair, what I've done over the last couple of days is to look at breaking that down. So what I can do is, is to, is to email around these findings. Because what you can, I think there's at least two and a half thousand pounds that shouldn't be posted to this committee. One, there was one that's nearly two thousand pounds that were for the preparation of the work plans for the Guildhall emergency cocktail works. Well, that's within the NHLF bit. So I think that's just been posted wrongly. So we can take out, I think, anywhere between two and two and a half thousand pounds, but I need to speak to Alan about that. We've had, we've had some statutory upgrades to the intruder alarms and that's, that's cost us, in terms of replacing panels and battery panels and things like that, almost eighteen hundred pounds. But that's a statutory thing, we can't do anything about that. But I will do a breakdown for you, absolutely. And get that sent around.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Particularly when we come to set the budget later in the year, maybe the budget isn't sufficient. I mean, two and a half for the whole complex is not a lot, really.
If you break down the servicing, which is what that really reflects, actually, we're on par because intruder alarm Carnegie, intruder alarm Guildhall, Carnegie aircon servicing and Guildhall extinguishers relate to five hundred and fifty-two pounds. Well, that's well within that budget. But clearly, we haven't budgeted for those contingencies for equipment that breaks down, which happens. It's a, you know, it's a problem that we have to face, but we haven't been financed to cover it.
Yeah. And the other one that's not on there, but is quite venue specific, is waste disposal. We had a big chat last night at finance about the significant waste disposal costs. So I just wanted to ask, you know, from your point of view, what's the sort of plan going forward to address that? Because we've spent, I think, again, the whole year's budget in three months on waste disposal costs.
So, so waste disposal, actually, that's not reflected in this, this expenditure, but it is for the council. And we do, we do play a big part in that expense because we have, we have a two tip system through the week of five bins. So three are usually used by the market over the two, two market days, Tuesday and Saturday. And two are really for the venues. But one of the things that we do need to look at is, is our commitment to our green credentials. And all the bottles that we use in the bar just get tipped into normal waste bins, we should have a bottle bank. So I think, I think as a council, we are going to start investigating that. And one of the people that we will be talking to is Breckland because they've just started their waste services. So we'll get some advice from them. So hopefully, we can reduce that. But that is a big expense across the council. And we do need to look at recycling as well as just using that. I think possibly, we could certainly get down to three bins, three bins a week. And also, I think it's something that with is, is within our remit. We did talk, Terry, because you was part of the committee last year. And I have spoken to some of the market traders. There's probably three market traders that use those three bins. And I've said that costs are so high, we might have to offset against you. But as a council, we supported you by not putting the stall fees up. And actually, they weren't put off by that. They said, we understand that. What we do want is it to be lockable bins. So the other traders don't go and put them into the bins that we're paying for. And that's absolutely correct. So we do need to look at those. And I think we can offset a little bit more against the fruit and veg and the fish that use those two, two, those three bins. So I think there's a way of cutting costs, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, it's encouraging. I couldn't quite remember the previous conversations about market usage and charging. But I remember we had a discussion last year, but I don't remember what we agreed. But it certainly was a concern last night, so I just wanted to get your take on it as well.
The other thing that I would just point out, and I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, certainly, you know, some of you probably know how to read budgets better than I do. But we do have a very simplistic way of delivering the budgets. I mean, literally, the annual budget is, is just split evenly between across 12 months. So your, your forecast per month is based on that equal measure. And actually, when you look at servicing, and when you look at another committee, which is Heritage in Town Events, all the mayoral events are done within the first six months. So actually, it looks as if it's skewed sometimes against what the reader is. So I wouldn't look too, too closely. What we should be doing is, we've got a lot of historical data now over the, so some of the budget setting for next year, maybe we should do accurate phased accounts across certain periods so we get a better reflection of whether we are actually working across the budgets appropriately.
All okay. That is, that is noted. 17823, marketing report, which again, is also good.
Well, can I defer to Hazel? Because that's why she's sitting here. She, she does the communication.
So the marketing report was sent out last week, probably, end of week. And so it sort of all came out to everybody. This month, I normally kind of put a bit more data in it, but I wasn't sure kind of going forward how you wanted it to look, if that makes sense. As it's a new committee, obviously, you might want different things on it and things. So I've just kind of listed all of our offline marketing places and online ones. And I've gone in bits to the social media statistics and the newsletter. We are obviously looking at ways to improve communication. It is an ongoing thing. We've been out talking to quite a lot of shops in town to get leaflet sites in and things. We are starting to integrate those. It can be a bit of a fight to get posters up in shops. So we, you know, going forward, we've looked at the leaflet holders that we've got in, and they're ready to go. A few of them have been distributed already and we're just looking for places to distribute that. So if anyone has any idea, that'd be brilliant. In terms of marketing, I know I've had a conversation with another councillor this week, we welcome stuff being sent in so that we can share it. The only, obviously, thing in terms of councillors is that it's not branded as per party politics, but that's the one for media policy. Yeah, we've got quite a few good communications out this month. There's been a lot of engagement. We are going back to quite a few comments as well and just making sure that people are aware of things. I'm obviously seeking more advice in the building as well, so things like, I think I put a post up about sound signs today and there was a few questions on it. So I went up and said, right, what do I need, who do I need to refer this to? Because I need to make sure it's going to the right committee so that we open that line of communication rather than just saying, go to councillor or which councillor, which committee, which service, whether it's us, Breckland or Norfolk. And I have spoken to Nathan at Breckland and we are keeping our ongoing communications through with that and making sure that we are bouncing off each other and making sure we've got the right things. I, I don't have a contact at Norfolk at the moment. That is something I'm looking into. I'm not sure who does their comms, but that would be good going forward, just to have that. We do share their posts and I know, Terry, you send them quite a lot as well, which get shared. But it'd be good to have that to kind of widen our responses and things as well, rather than just tagging on Facebook. But if anyone has any questions?
We, you need to put stuff out to parish councils, I, like events. We send posters out to the parish council so that they, they're aware of what's going on here and they might come in to do stuff.
Yeah, so at the moment, we've got quite a few that follow us on Facebook. I know they are sharing our posts and things, but it is something we need to look into more. We did contact a few previously, but a lot that do kind of their own page and things want to keep it within their own.
Could we get posters sent out? Because I know they've all got notice boards. Could we get posters sent out so they can put them on the notice board?
Yeah, just get them those contacts.
And is it possible that we could, and I know if it's cost effective, but most of the stuff is round the town, all the posters and all that, which is great. But if you go to the estates, there's no notice boards anywhere. And is there any way that we could get notice boards in estates? Maybe one a point close, one up at shops at the Lanys Estate. I don't know if it's financially feasible, but it just gets that spread further around the town, one at maybe Clofus Church.
That's a question for David.
I think a lot of this might get covered by the media policy as it comes, but if I can ask you.
Well, well, there's a couple of things. One, actually, and I'll give you an example in a sec. One, we are seeing a little bit more positivity in terms of people willing to put posters up and things. We had a visit to the, to the office just before I went away on holiday from the Dean family who run the kiosk. And they actually approached us and say, look, we get a lot of people down there. They're always asking about what things are going on in the town. Can you give us all your posters? And we said, well, we can give you a little dispenser and things like that. So that's, I thought that was really good that they, they came to us and challenged us. But Hazel has done a little walk around to just test the water with others that have, and again, they, you know, they seem to be more willing, whether that's because they're now seeing more stuff in the town centre, they're actually seeing whether continental market, I think, actually probably helped because they saw it on their doorstep and there's an advantage to it to bring people in. So I think they're seeing this, this working together a bit more. In terms of the notice boards, if we're going to put things that actually are paid events, we have to ask planning permission. The cost that you're talking about, the actual notice boards, we do have a couple of notice boards in the stores, but they are the actual notice boards. So we might have to just invest in some pillars to, to put them. But if we're going to put council information, we'd be okay. If it's to actually advertise some paid events that we, we deliver, then we're going to have to get planning permission. I've got a notice board that we took out of the Guildhall porch before the refurbishments. And I don't want to put it back in the porch, I want to put it outside, not, not on the building, but with some posts near the building so it doesn't mess up the fabric of the two listed building. But I've got a reply for planning permission apparently beforehand because I obviously want to advertise. But we will do that. We've got a couple of boards picked, so we could look into that. That's a good idea. I mean, we've always spoken, not enough.
I'm not in any way critical of what, what's going on because from what I've seen, the events now are a lot better. There's a lot more of them. And I just want to get more people to know about it. And anything, even if it's a dozen people, it's, it's a better football and they pass on the message through the, we're friends. So it's just about getting, how can we get them out to as many places as we can?
And the, and the other point I was going to make is, we have a really good relationship with U3A, who come and do their monthly speakers event. And because they, they go out to little villages and village shops and post offices and things to advertise with their posters, they said, well, just give us a bundle and we'll take them with us. So, but what I'll try and do is to find out where they actually go, who actually takes them, is it, you know, the post office in such and such a village? So we can see where the gaps are and maybe make, you know, make a call to others. I mean, you know, I have relatives in East Arling, so maybe there's something.
I, I, I used to deliver in Great Hockham and you never see anything about Thetford, do you? Or very, very little, you get like the community police and stuff like that. There was never anything from, from Thetford. And I don't know whether it is because we wasn't telling them or whether it was because they was going, just leave it.
I think there's a bit of both, to be fair, to be absolutely.
I know the clerk has, has moved on, I don't know who the clerk is there now, but I know they've got a notice board in Thompson and probably most of the other places, maybe even Waterford. They might not be happy about us advertising there, but.
Having gone to one end, I'll just chip in here if that's all right. Having gone to one end of scale on U3A, would it be worth going to the other and looking at putting posters in school?
Yeah, so we do send them out through our schools project at the moment. So Amber and Katie have got lots of contacts in schools. And funny enough, my, my children are Drake and they're, this week, their newsletter's gone out and it's got four of our posters underneath it, which is quite enough because I can see that they're actually doing it, if that makes sense. But yeah, so we, so we say to Amber, a lot of them will be, if it's a family event, obviously child specific event that happens without, anything wider than that, you kind of have to go, well, yeah, but I'm trying to find a swing on it. But yeah, lots of schools are happy to share it. I know there's a lot of change with trusts of schools at the moment and things in Thetford. So we're just keeping an eye on that. But they are trusts that we currently work. Yeah, it would just be worth just making that list, basically. I think we've got, we do have a lot of places we distribute that we don't necessarily list. And we do say to anyone that's doing kind of child events, if you drop some leaflets off, we're happy to drop the leaflets into them as well, as well as our events, so.
Okay, good. I'll chip in.
Yeah, of course.
And just on posters specifically, I think villages is important. So I think people in villages tend to read the parish notice board far better than other locations. So definitely worth putting posters in some of the villages. I know for us at the magazine, we do a village pickup. So we do, it's three thousand magazines, go out to all the villages, so we have forty pickup points. So every month, a member of staff drives to those forty different locations and gives them some magazines. So if you had a bundle of posters at the same time, I'd be happy for, you know, people to ask to put posters up as well. And I can give you a list of the different places that we go to, but we go out as far as Hollington, Exworth, you know, that side, but Garbesham and Wheating and Monford. So that could add to the list. But there are, the thing with posters is there's always far more locations than you think. I think what we need to be doing is building up our list, which is on the appendices in the media policy. Because, you know, even on Barnham Cross Estate, the notice board at Thomson Church is really good and it does actually get used quite a lot. Same on Norrid Road Estate, that was paid for by the residents group and actually it's a really good community notice board. So we need to use, you know, whatever we can, basically. Generally, oh, and the other thing about parishes is, it'd be good if we start building up a network of parish newsletters. So I know that Monford, Monford has a regular monthly newsletter that's delivered to every house in the parish. I picked it up from the butcher's there. It actually is really cheap to advertise, so occasionally we might want to put something in there. They might even put stuff in for free. I know that Croxton Village also has a regular newsletter, so building up. Yeah, so sort of building up those contacts, maybe once or twice a letter for free and occasionally an advert. But, you know, bringing people into the town, I think, is important. Generally speaking, from the marketing report, I think there's been a huge improvement over the last six months. It's been tremendous and largely down to surveys or, you know, it's very noticeable. The response about the sound too, obviously I've invested interest in that because it comes under amenities, but I was really pleased to see the reply to the questions because I saw the questions and I thought, well, Baggot, do I need to respond? And it's like me, you know, biting noses. But I saw your response and I was like, yes, that's spot on, you know, where there are questions from the public, the council should try and help people and refer people on. So, you know, that's definitely the way I, I'd like us to go in responding to people. And the only thing I'd say is I've, I've got all the contact details for the comms team and county, so I can let you have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I just add to that? Terry, you've always said how we should be responding to social media. And I've always counted that in terms of there's a fear factor that we say something wrong. So I know, I don't want to say too much more than that because we're going to go on to the media policy and all the rest of it. But I think there's, there's a real need though, before we get Hazel to commit to it, she's very, she's very good at writing the, but we just need that official sign off.
Yeah.
So we need that editorial process and then we can go.
There will always be a bit of a lag and I'm happy with that. And as somebody who's not very patient sometimes, I saw it, oh, who's going to respond? But, you know, I'd much rather you check it out and then respond. So I'm, you know, I'm happy that there's a bit of a lag.
Yeah. Given, given my history, which I was explaining to you earlier. There is a fear factor and you have got to be right and won't be tired of you if you're not. Having said all that, I do think we need the confidence to take these things on. I really do. And, and I, I think you've already demonstrated that you'd probably be all right at that. So.
Yeah, so I've done a lot of, sorry, I've done a lot of conversation with Nathan at Breckland over this because they do a free prompt response. And he sends to respond to the question. And then if they've asked again, because you get another person asking, he'll signpost them back to that. And then on the third one, they say, we've answered your question, please follow this link. But it's just a case of.
That's anti trolling really, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's, which, we do, there is an element of, you kind of ignore some of the comments, not, not ignore them, but just kind of look past them because you think, are you actually asking a question directly or are you just putting a response on? That one, obviously.
That's key to all.
Yeah, with the sound one, obviously you saw that, you would have seen there's a mixture of comments on it. And I thought, actually, I could go back to an individual and I thought, no, I'll put it on there and it's on there on the bottom and it's just signposting. But I think our social media pages, we do use it more at the moment, it's more of a signpost to mail into the office because then you get to the right person. Because I can sit behind a computer and I can respond, but I don't have all the answers for it. And sometimes the questions are a lot more in depth or they fall under Freedom of Information, which obviously we don't respond online with that. So it's just about knowing where the line is and having some kind of guidance on that, I suppose. So that when you have things that are bigger and people say, well, I'm not going to email into the office, well, you know, you've, you've been signposted to do that. And then if we do that, it's not because we're not trying to be transparent. Because I know we've had comments back saying, well, you could just publish onto this online. It's like, actually, I don't have that information and I'm not a person qualified to give you that information. It needs to go by Iraq or it needs to go to, you know, finance or whoever, because it's, you know, everything's a public document. But yeah, it's just having that guidance as to maybe a few kind of taglines and things. But we do try and signpost back rather than respond and on.
I think that comes with experience as well. So Breckland don't always get it right. They've made some right hours.
Yeah. But hopefully it's going to happen.
Are we all done with that? I think we are, aren't we? Okay, we'll move on to 17923, Thetford Town Council Media Policy to review and agree the media policy document. Has everybody read it before? I'm getting nods of a cent there, so that's very nice. Okay, so I think, I think we'll start off, we'll start off with general comments and then move on to the need for amendments afterwards. So general comments, please.
Doug.
I think it's a very strong policy. I was really pleased to read it. It's very clear to me. So welcome it. I think as someone also new councillor, seeing something which is just very clearly laid out like that, I thought it was very helpful. So much fun.
Chris.
My company's the last media policy we've had in the boardroom. Sorry. See, one of the things, this is the last media policy part of the boardroom. It took about three, it's a lot of right place for this. Nearly nine months, I think.
Okay.
So this, this one is much more simple.
Good, good. I think probably simple is better in a lot of ways. Are there any requests for amendments? Terry.
I think from my point of view, having had a hand in helping to write it, I think it's important that it evolves over time because, you know, there will always be new opportunities when it comes to marketing and comms because new opportunities present themselves all the time and it's important that we respond to that. I wouldn't want it to restrict us from taking opportunities. Plus, with the appendices like the media distribution list, people do come and go. And the same with the poster locations, there's nine listed there, but we could end up hopefully with twenty, thirty different locations in time. We just need to, to build it out. So I think that's. to build it out. So I think that's important.
So what, what you're saying is in, in a lot of, in, in many senses, it's a living document to be amended as we go along.
Yeah, I think with some documents, uh, with policies, you adopt them and then two years later look at them again. I would much rather we adopt this, but you know, three, four, five months' time, look to see if it needs to be tweaked because it is absolutely crucial to, you know, what we do as a council. Um, I'm probably more keen today to hear from David and Hazel about their thoughts on it. Because, um, we've already, as councillors, some of us have helped to write it. In terms of amendments, I think it's important that these eyes will be implementing it and I'd much rather hear your views at this stage.
Do you want to start?
I'll start. Um, so just as a, just to, let's just get the silly bit out of the way. We refer in the document on numerous occasions, the, uh, committee of venues and communications. We need to change that. But actually, um, the committee that is amenities in brackets, including cemeteries. Because the problem is if we put venues and markets to the reader, they might think, what's that got to do with communications? So it could be venues and markets in brackets, including communications. So we just get that in. That's just a, a silly thing. Though, I mean, actually, one of the things that I quite liked about this is from a, from a, um, a stark perspective, is we're now getting into issue, uh, into highlights in here about measurable targets. So how many press releases are considered to be, you know, the norm or at least the minimum? We're expected to do at least one Facebook post or social media post, not Facebook, social media, the, the whole remit. So I think I like that because again, we, we know where we stand and what we've got to do and, and, and how we're measured. And also the fact it will beef out the marketing report because we'll issue against our loks in that marketing report. So I quite like that. Um, as a, just a, another little staff issue, there was, um, there was a bit in internet acceptable use policy, which I think is, is section four. Um, and it says, um, moving there, let's get it. It said to it. Damage, damage. So we mustn't make comments that will damage a councillor's reputation or the councillor's reputa- reputation. I would like to see councillors, staff and councils' reputa- representation, uh, or reputation in there. Just so we're all one thing, we're all one being, we're all singing from the same gym sheet. That's just a, a, a little, um, aside. Apart from that, I quite like.
Um, do you want to put that forward as an amendment then?
Please, um.
So can you?
So I would, I would just, I would just say damage to a councillor's staff and the council's reputation.
Yeah.
I think it's somewhere, we're about halfway down, I think. I can, I can point it out to you, Terry, if that's.
We need to page numbers adding to it. And it's, uh, page eight, on the top of page eight.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've got that. So, yeah. Um.
The other thing I would make, uh, a concern about is the bit about website staff ID. So staff photo ID contact for relevant service, uh, service. Um, how, how are we going to implement that? I know on the website you've got councillors and emails and contacts and, you know, and that's what you guys have agreed to. But I think there's an issue with some staff members to have their photos and have that sort of really specific to them. In the past, we have had staff members that have left the council simply because they've been targeted while they're doing their weekly shop. Um, personally, you know, I don't care, but, uh, well, I do care about being targeted in Sainsbury's, but, um, I, I don't really care. I mean, I don't take the greats to photos. So you might have to use one from ten years ago. Um, but the purpose of this is what? Is it to always be the contact on call or I don't know?
Oh, okay. So, um, we, we've got two things there. Um, on the first one, shall we, shall we have a, a, a vote on an amendment to include, um, staff and line, whatever it is, damage to a councillor's reputation, councillor's reputation? Could I have a, uh, proposed as a seconder for that, please? Proposed by Terry, seconded by, saw Chris first, so.
Okay.
Um, everybody in favour? Anyone against? That's unanimous. So that's all good. Um, on the second point, um, I'm going to have to push back a little bit on that, David. I, I think the same applies to us, um, as councillors in terms of this, you know, being recognisable. Um, I certainly think there's a case for some staff to, um, have a, an email address or a phone number.
Yeah. Maybe then.
May, may, maybe not all. I don't.
So maybe we have, and again, I'm not being disrespectful or patronizing to someone like, uh, Hazel. But if, if my remit is to cover communications, venues and things like that, it should be me. And not in communications Hazel, because you're going to get too many staff. You know, you need to, I mean, you know, my position should reflect the accountability. So I, I can understand that. I just want to know how far it goes down.
Um, I think for senior management team members, it should be compulsory. And then I'm quite happy for it to be optional for other members of staff. And I think that idea came from Swatford because every member of Swatford Town Council staff is on Facebook. Um, much of the media policy is copied from them. Um, and there was about two or three others from around the UK, which are regarded as best practice. And so that's where it comes from. But, um, senior management team, I think, you know, part of the job.
And, and if you, you know, if you go into shops and other venues, you see staff up on the wall, if you're going to Roy's, you can see. So, but sometimes there's issues that might reflect it. So if we could certainly agree, well, this is me talking, there's other members of staff that need to be consulted, I suppose. But my opinion is, I'm quite happy at the level I, my responsibilities are there.
So how about if we phrase the amendment as? Staff go.
Well, you, you, I think you could probably highlight, it's nice to actually show what other staff do, but maybe not the photo.
Okay. Shall, shall we do senior staff go on there? Other staff up to their own discretion?
Yeah.
I, I think if you frame it as members of the senior management team, because then, you know, there's a defined group of people that are.
See, there are, I mean, there's the town clerk, deputy town clerk, and then there is two distinct teams. There's the town team and what I call the vent team, venues, events and marketing team, of which, uh, Nick is head of one and I'm head of the other. And everything under that comes within those two teams. So if there was something that was, uh, was contacted through me, it's my job to make sure that one of my team will sort that issue out as soon as possible. I'd be loath to have, you know, expect other people like, like, um, Hazel. I mean, she does, she will look at social media over the weekend because she wants to get it right. But I don't think she should be taking emails and phone calls. It should go through me first. But that's just my personal opinion.
Um, so long as there is someone available all the time for an email or a phone call to go through to, I, I think, I think that's the important thing, isn't it?
I mean.
So you, you spoke earlier about being on call and I suppose, yes, you know.
It's on call to, to try and rectify the issue as soon as possible. However, however way I do that, I mean.
And, and I, I guess, so the senior members of the team would all be able to do that.
Who's on duty and things like that, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Um, can we put that forward as an, an amendment then? Um, the amendment is senior, uh, ca- uh, staff, uh, have a picture and, uh, a, an email and a phone number. Uh, more junior staff. I think we still have the phone number and the email, but have a, an option about their photo.
No, not everybody's got works funds, but so, but I do have their, their phone. But, but what you can, you can almost, you can almost have that organizational chart that, that, um, that Hazel is responsibility for the communications, et cetera, et cetera. But if there's an issue or someone's not getting the right information because of a complaint or something, they come through to me. And then I'll know how we can, we can, uh, we can answer that, whatever the issue is. Because of who's on duty or who's responsible for it, but it's, it's my job and I'm held accountable for that.
So what?
So I think we've still made a, we've still made, you know, a step forward. So hopefully that helps in terms of rectifying the reason why we're doing this and I understand that. But I just don't think that certain members of staff, junior level should be open to that. That's just my opinion.
Okay, um, so we're saying that only senior members of staff are listed on the website.
Sorry, we, yeah. We've been a waste. I mean, the point of this is that we want people to be able to go to the website, be able to find the person they need to do to get, uh, the issue fixed. So you talked about the organization, I wish, I, I talk about organization, I suppose. You know, about having something like that with making some photos clearly delineated so people know who to go to, um, as well as, you know, so that, I mean, that's essentially the point of it. That's what we're looking to do. Um, they're now micromanaging.
Yeah, cer- certainly I would, I personally would agree with that. Um, it's transparency, isn't it? In the end. You know, the human face of the, uh, of the council.
So if I, if I'm giving you an example, which, which is a perennial problem, and that is, you know, to say, and this doesn't come under this committee, but it's the, it's the locking of the cemetery gates for instance. Now, if someone phoned up a random person on that contact list, they wouldn't even know who to contact. Because certain members of staff don't need to know who the company is that does that or how we can do that. They wouldn't have access to keys and things like that. The senior manager who, who is in, who's, who's responsible for that would do. And it's like, he would, he or she, whoever they are, would make the decision to contact that outside contractor because they would have those contacts on their phone, or a member of staff that was on duty or accessible to go and solve the problem. You wouldn't, so someone from the general public would probably look and say, well, I'll phone this person and this person does nothing else but operate the tea room. You know, they're not even going to have the, so therefore from a, from a member of public's point of view, they're going to be frustrated at the first hurdle because they don't think we're being helpful. So I think we need to make sure that there, if this is the context of, this is the reason why we're doing this, we need to make sure that the first line of communication is with someone who can actually solve the issue.
So you're basically saying your concern with what's there is that what will happen is someone goes, the cemetery gate is locked. So when you have no info or idea where to go.
Then the answer to that is you, you get in touch with someone who does know. I mean, I, I don't think that's.
I might be talking a different turn a little bit here, but I'm just gonna, so my contract at the moment is half nine till four. I'm in Monday to Friday. That's fine. I, I will happily go on to Facebook and do bits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if you do more events and things like that. From my point of view, if there's an issue, I send people to David. David is my manager. And obviously small things I can deal with, but he is my point of call from that point. I personally have been stopped in Tesco's, I have been stopped in my school playground and I have had, well, you work for the council, you're locking cemeteries, you're doing this, or you, it's your fault it's going wrong. And it's like, actually, I am not in that level of responsibility, my job to have to deal with that. And I don't, it's not me shirking responsibility, but actually I think I get both points, but an email contact is fine. But like we said, not everybody has a work phone. And equally, I don't think everybody would be happy with the photos being put on there because there is, there may be privacy concerns, members of staff that you don't know about, because we don't have to disclose things like that because it's not, it's, you know, there's a safety aspect to things. Um.
Doesn't that equally, sorry, Terry?
Uh, I think the easiest way forward is, uh, photos compulsory for members of the senior management team. Everybody else is optional. I wouldn't want to put anybody into a position where they felt they had to put a photo up. You know, we can't legislate for, you know, everybody's individual circumstances. If somebody feels happy doing that, then great, because we would like to improve transparency and accountability. But I wouldn't want to force anybody. So I mean, that's probably a good way forward. Um, just looking at the script, for example, even though all the photos are there, well, maybe there's staff that they have a handbook of photos that we wouldn't know. Um, but there's certainly a lot of photos there, but for all of the roles, um, sort of like grounds maintenance and stuff, that sort of thing, um, there's, uh, only one telephone number and that's the main office number.
So that makes a lot of sense.
So, yeah.
So we do have the central mail email address as well.
So in terms of that then, Terry, that's, that's different. But for point of contact to, to, to sort of, you know, solve issues and complaints, then that upper level could have the additional details. That, that, that may be, that may be okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the deputy clerk, the town clerk, people like that on here have a, have a mobile number visible.
Yeah.
And a direct email.
Yeah.
Everybody else is, you know, it's number.
We have the central mail at Safford Town Council and that comes in and then it gets distributed.
Oh, it, it does?
Yeah, and it gets.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good.
Right, cemetery is that person, that person, it does get.
So I think that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, uh, the amendment is that, uh, we have.
Well, I think you could say all, all members of staff can have the basic information, but senior managers have the contact information to, you know.
So the, the amendment is that senior staff have full information, junior staff has, have as much as they want to disclose.
Yeah.
I'm probably a, a, um, I was a flat piece big and a seconder. Chris and could we have a phone? In that mess.
In terms of the decision, Terry, because this is a media policy, so we are adopting the proposed policy and we are recommending to full council to be resolved and approved.
Hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, yeah. We, when it goes to full council, can we add page numbers to it? I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, um, yeah, because, I mean, m- maybe even line numbers because there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah.
Sorry, am I going too far there?
I'd be happy with page numbers.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I think that's settled. Is there any, uh, any other amendments, anyone? Proposes? Good. It was relatively painless.
Yeah, right, full council.
Wow. That one. Um, one eighty twenty-three, communications. To discuss options to improve Thetford Town Council communications.
I think one of the things was about trying to widen the scope of what, uh, which I've already mentioned. Trying to widen it up to other parish users and.
Yeah, I'll just.
Just to let that.
I think largely we've kind of already discussed this.
Pretty much.
Um, I mean, Terry. It, it does say to agree in action plans. I think we should do that.
Well, I'm going to throw it back there. Hang on, because having done the job for a while now, um, what do we need to be doing as a committee to support you? Because I could give you all sorts of ideas, but you, you know, you do the job on, you know, a daily basis. What are we not doing that we could be doing?
As councillors or as the council?
Both.
As councillors, it would be good to have more open communication. So, um, I've had, you've sent me things this week, I've had another councillor send me things, but actually, well, no, I had another councillor posting on Facebook and I reached out and said, can, can we share this? Are you happy for us to share this as a council? Because obviously some things you might not.
Like the surgery poster?
Yes, the surgery poster. So I reached out to that, um, councillor and it's not a case of being sent things all the time of you have to post, you have to post, but it's a, it's good news thing. So you swatted me a few things and said, would this be worth our show? And it's like, yeah, brilliant. It's within Thetford. But it's having that open communication and opening that up because previous committees, we've sat here and we've said, okay, we'll all distribute leaflets and posters and bring them along and bring us our poster packs. And then I've brought poster packs and they've sat on the table. It's like, okay, but, you know, you are the people who are out there and you have your own. I don't know what the official term wards for constitution is, but you are the people that know where the gaps are as well. So having that conversation and that understanding of actually, I am one person, yes, I can distribute to a certain amount, but, you know, if you are, if you know you're going to, say, the childcare centre or you're going to the anti-centre or you're any, anywhere, and you're happy to just either drop in and grab some leaflets or I can distribute them at the committee and things like that. It would be good to have that two-way street rather than just, you've missed that and you've missed that and you've missed that. Um, and I know obviously we have quite a few councillors that go back on social media as well. I've seen a few posts through, um, where people are asking questions and you, the people that know the answers to bits because it would have been discussed in your committee. So it is good to open that. I know, I do understand not all, so, not all councillors on social media. I am trying to get a few extras on there. Um, but, um, yeah, opening that communication is absolutely key because you can't have a committee that looks at communication if. you can't have a committee that looks at communication if you don't have it within the building and wider. You know, if anyone just pops into the office for a meeting, it's just a case of, oh, have you seen that? And Stuart Wright, as well as Mayor, he pops in and says, I've shared something on Twitter from Mildenhall or wherever it seems to be, and I go, brilliant, I'll just reshare it and just having that open conversation as well.
I think, if, if I'm allowed to speak, I think a part of the problem there is the problem with the sheer volume of new councillors.
Yeah.
Prior to tonight, I wasn't, I don't even know your name, so apologies for that. And I didn't know, I didn't understand your role because we haven't been, as councillors, informed of what officers take on which roles. So a bit of a two-way street. I'm, I'm all for more communication and, and as I say, that goes, that goes both ways. So, yeah.
I say, I did know your name, but not through account. We met in. Well, I'm quite open to the, to the idea of, you know, if, if you've got stuff to put out, I, I'm quite happy for you to phone, email, if it's something I can help with because if it's promoting the council and the work the council does, well, that's what I'm elected to do. So I'm more than happy to do that. And so, yeah. I think it's great and I do think it should be a two-way street. You know, because with great respect, you're an employee of the council and you're doing stuff that we've asked you to do and we should really do it out there as well. So, yeah.
Since you're about to jump in.
Well, no, I, 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 so just to take your point, Terry. And I know we've discussed it and hopefully some of the councillors will come along on Friday and find out, you know, what members of staff do, but it's not always, I think, you know, you make decisions, you know, you, you, you are more than, or welcome is, is a still a bit of a silly word really, you know, you should be coming in to also speak to us and tell us because one of the things, especially with the venues, there's sometimes, you know, we're too close to it, we are passionate, we have an idea, we, we go with it, but sometimes we need people and let's face it, we're all on the same side, if, if that's the right term, for you to come in and say, you know what, we're struggling on the bar income. I came to an event the other day and actually I don't think we promote the fact that we've got a bar, people can take a drink. We, we do have brainstorming sessions within the staff and that was one of them. You know, people don't understand, they can take drink into the main hall sometimes to watch theatre, so therefore they just think, oh, I don't want to do that, I won't buy one. But you, you're also someone that can see it in a different light because you're not there every single day and you don't, you don't need to be invited in, you know, you need to come in and say, look, I need to talk to you about this. So there, and it's not being, I'm sorry, I don't want to be critical and I don't want to deflect what it is, we should also be asking you to come in and we should have conversations, we have had conversations, we've talked about the markets and things like that. But I think we need to do more of that and I think that's one, that's one advantage of what might be happening, you know, now because we've got a new influx who's got, you know, a bit of hunger to do something and let's get it right from the start.
Would it be worthwhile having a set event and we, we just all turn up and.
It's just been, it's in hand.
I know because of August Friday, but.
During, during work hours unfortunately, which is.
You, you, do you know what was, it is, people are so busy in terms of trying to do their own thing and we've had this as an internal discussion as well. We need to find a way of internal communication between officers, in actual fact, what the decisions are being made in other committees. I haven't got time to run through a two-hour meeting and listen to what was said. I want, are the, are there any actions? How's it going to change the council? Is it pertinent to me? I also set in priorities, you know, departments should be presenting, pitching to the rest of the council what each, each committee is doing. So we can all get passionate about it, we're all one team. So when someone tackles us, even though we're not working day to day with those kind of things, we have sufficient knowledge and the reasons why we've set those priorities to tell the member of public why we're doing it, the advantages of doing it. So there's a lot that we can do about communications, both externally and internally, and I think, you know, so, yeah.
Mine, as, as new councillors, which a lot of us are, we've got a lot of learning to do as well.
Similarly, you know, I mean, I, I, I know you Vic and I know what you do and all the rest of it, but with respect, I've never met you Doug, I don't, I don't know what you do or, or what, you know, what, how we can work together to, so there's a lot of, it, you know, Hazel was right, it's two-way. How, how can you challenge me? How can you add value to what I don't know? You know, the problem with us is we, as a council, we do, we do pitch above our weight at times, which means most people, you know, tend to, we, we have this thing about being recruited to one job, but actually we try and do three or four, which means sometimes you can be a jack of all trades and master of none. Because we have to, you know, we've got a special focus, we talk about a primary focus in our job. This is what Hazel's primary focus is communication, that's what we expect her to do. But when the chips are down and people are on holiday or sick, you have to fill in and do it. And actually, the, we want to know, is there a councillor actually? We can ask and tap into their expertise. So I think we need to, you know, we, we need to do a lot of internal work in terms of finding out how we can, we can work together as a council. It's not, nothing to do with, you know, what politics you've got and stuff like that. We've all got politics, but, you know, we, we, we work for the council and, you know, promote the council, we need to do that as well. Speech over, rant over, sorry about that.
I agree with you.
Okay, no, it's fine. It says here we, we need to agree an action plan. I actually think a lot of it has been taken up with the media policy, but there remains, yeah, the sort of internal workings, if we like, as you've spoken. I don't think then really there's been, it's perhaps the, the place to agree an action plan now. I wonder if we should defer that?
Yeah.
And I'll have a little chat with you and we'll, we'll carry on and see how we, see how we get on, check some stuff for that. Jerry?
And the point David made about decision-making process and sort of cascading that down to staff and sometimes other committees is absolutely valid and we had a conversation last night at finance and personnel about that and Alan is doing a piece of work to, to sort of agree a process, I'm all for structures and processes. And trust me, the last thing we want as councillors is to make decisions for them not to be implemented. So, you know, what comes after us sitting in this room is more important than, than anything because what's the point of us sitting there for hours and hours? We're here to, to get things done. And the only thing I was going to mention under communications is, comes back to your earlier comment Hazel about having the sort of confidence to do some of this. And again, I don't know your background at all, but, you know, I think the council should be investing in you. So I was going to ask about any sort of training requirements, you know, how to write a press release, I don't know if you have this training. You know, I've seen some of the press releases that we've sent out as a council, I don't think they've been great in the past, which is why I wrote the model one. You know, we need to be much better at that and I would be quite happy, you know, the media policy puts some onus on you now as an officer for us to pay for you to do some training around communications and press releases.
Press releases are done above me at the moment as an officer. I don't think we can contact, it's a thing about we can't contact press directly without guidance from above in a contract. So it's just about making sure we're not treading over that. But no, I haven't been doing press releases, I've just sent out the ones that I've been sent. I did do some work with, it's the local clerk's council, I think, on diffusing situations on social media when people are trolling as such. And I did a course for that and that has really helped to refer because I've then looked back and gone, well, I know where this is going, so I'm now going to step to this bit. And, yeah, it is about the confidence of going back and, you know, saying things and not saying things, but it's, yeah, it's just having that. Steps to do it.
Yeah, well, I think we should be correcting some of that.
I think we're done. 18123 Weekly Markets, to discuss options to improve the weekly markets, new management of weekly markets and the decision required to agree any recommendations to full council. We have a proposal to consider the recruitment of a market coordinator. Once again, I'll ask you, has everybody read it? Do. Off you go.
I was a little confused because I thought that's what they could do. Because see, this is the thing, so I don't know who does what, but I thought that's what you, what you done.
Well, you'll find out on Friday a little bit more of how it. So basically the markets comes within my remit, if you like, and currently we have a shortage. We're, we're, we're not far, so one of our employees was on maternity leave, she has now said that she's not going to come back. So we're looking to start the recruitment process for her thirty hours. But I don't think that would include this necessarily. So this is a bit of a, we did have a previous employee that left the council who did this and it was actually pretty much that brief. So, and we've never really been able to replicate that. So unfortunately, but someone's got to do it and I.
As I say, I don't, I don't know the stuff and I will learn more on.
But I must admit, from a personal perspective, if this did come off, at least I might get down to normal hours. That's what I would say. But we did have someone in the past who has done this and actually, if I'm brutally honest, you know, I'm not a slouch, I will do that, I won't just stand there, I mean, I'll sweep the steps and things like that to try and do. The person who used to do this, if you pull a bin out of the compound, sometimes they're not particularly nice looking and they sit on the market square and it's a presentation thing. It was jet washing those down, making them spick and span, there was cleaning the steps, there was jet washing the pavements. I mean, now we've taken over the marketplace, they would be sweeping the leaves, which is what he, he did be in the past. So, you know, it's something that we've had in the past and we've missed. There's a couple of issues that we might have to tweak, I think, in terms of we really do need to go to a cashless process because I don't like staff, you know, I, I find it hard when you go to a stall holder and they pay cash and, well, Terry's seen people, people that are there buying goods at half our seven in the morning, so there's no early time to do it before anyone. I, I, I actually take the cash as early as I possibly can, but they're busy putting stalls up. But then if you're taking someone's payment and there's three or four people, that's not good. So, and from a security point of view, in terms of protecting that person, we need to go to a cash, but we can do that, that's not, that's not hard to do in these day and age, you know, people will quite easily pay with a card and we, we've got the ability to do that. So there's a little tweak there, but that's not a big thing. The big issue is, have we got the money to do it? That's the thing. But, I mean, from my point of view, personal and from a council perspective, that's, that's a good thing.
Well, I hope, I hoped you would say that and I'm glad you have. We had a look at how the market was and is and looked at an example of best practice. Again, went to Swaffham, I went over there, had a chat with them and so forth, and that's the way they do it in Swaffham and it seems to work very well for them. So that's why we brought this back here. Anybody else got a few? Cherry then Vic?
And we've made a very clear commitment in our manifesto that was adopted that we will support the market and I, you know, I'm determined to make it one of our priorities as a council. And the only way we will do that is by putting the investment in place and the capacity in place and, you know, with the best will in the world, David's got a hundred and one other priorities. I can understand why, you know, the market's in there and it gets done, but what I want is somebody that has the time to have a relationship with the market traders, to have the time to bring up potential new traders, come to Thetford, try it out, all of that sort of stuff. And to do the interlingual partnership working as well as keeping it clean and presentable and all the rest of it. So it is crucial, I think, that we invest in this role. I think possibly it could grow over time if it is successful. I'm very keen that we, in the future, establish a market subcommittee that we can have market traders attending and contributing to. I've spoke to Fabian Eagle, who's a candidate member at County, but he is a market trader at Swaffham and he helps run there, he's the chair of their market subcommittee and he's offered to come and speak to us as a council about how they work their market.
I think I'm right in saying, and this may not be applicable to Thetford, but I think I'm right in saying, their subcommittee, their market subcommittee consists entirely of market.
Well, yeah, that's something that we consider and this role can give us the capacity to organise that and facilitate it, but, yeah, this, this is our first investment, I think, as a new council in the market and I'm delighted.
Obviously, the Saturday and Tuesday markets, we, we want to look to grow, especially the Tuesday market. But is there potential that this role could expand on to possibly doing the odd farmer's markets, crop markets, so maybe on a Sunday? But because I'm going to say the market square is empty. I know that we've got the spoons issue, but Tuesday market operates while it's there, a Sunday market possibly, could it expand to that? Because what I'm looking at is if we're paying someone, what is it, twenty thousand pounds, wouldn't it? If we're paying, we need to get that income in as well from market traders and stuff like that as well. So is there potential with this role to expand and maybe do a, a Sunday market?
I, I would answer that by saying, yes, you know, nothing's off the table, is it? We want to grow the market however that may be.
Yeah, because one of the criticisms that I, I hear all the time about market is, play nothing now. And so the key to this role would be in expanding the Saturday, expanding the Tuesdays and possibly putting in new, new sort of days and revenue source, bringing people into the town.
So just a point in terms of, it's a, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a catch-22 in terms of, I mean, I must admit, I've been pleasingly proved wrong in, because I've always had a fear of advertising traders and doing their trader profiles because, and the reason is, is because it would be sod's law, bluntly, that you would promote someone and then the weather would be bad, they wouldn't turn up. People would make a, a dash with the market and they'll go, what? But actually, that's not worked and I think we, I, I, you know, I've been proved wrong and I'll hold my hands up. And Hazel's done a campaign recently and it's actually worked to our advantage, I was telling Terry before the meeting, we've got some more traders that have contacted us. It's coupled with the fact that, you know, I think, I think the continental market made a difference, we are doing some more events, people can see that football hopefully is being attracted by those events because football is the king. If no one comes there, it doesn't matter how great a trader you are, you know, the reason some of those traders come, rain or shine, is because they've been there for twenty odd years and they've been built a core audience. But it's really, it's really pleasing that some of them, and we need, when they're there, we almost need to spoil them and make them feel valued. And, you know, I, I spoke to the guys on Tuesday and said, you know, they were late, but they got there, I was in the office, I saw them on CCTV, by the time I got there, half their store was out and I said, I wouldn't have put you here, I would have put you right slap bang in the middle of the market because you're going to be a draw, that's where you're going next week. And it's that kind of relationship that can be built when you've got that report. So there's a lot more work that we can do and hopefully this role. So one of the things that we've also done, and I'll show you when some of the councillors come down on Friday, we call it the gazebo store, which is attached to the large court where we keep all the tables and thingies. So we've tidied all that up, we've put a new bench in which will double up as a dressing room if we ever do things in the large court. But that's an ideal market coordinator's office on the day, so people can come there, they can pay, pay for their stall, but they can, they know that someone's there, but that person won't be sitting in the office all the time because they'll be doing other duties and, and again, they can sort of, you know, paint a. Paint a, touch up a bit of, you know, post that's been knocked, I think. If we've got the money to do it, it's a really good role. It, you might look at it and think it's, it's. It's a pretty low role, but honestly, the previous employee. Uh. We have ruled the fact that we've not had him in the council because he did so much that was beneficial. Um. You know, in and around the buildings was kept spotless. Because he, he, you know. He did a pit, he swept, he, he jet washed and things like that. So I think. It's got, it's got potential, especially now we're trying to make the market that sort of, you know, yeah, focus. In terms of the other things, there are, there is another member of staff that has a brief to put those kind of events on. And one of the things that she's working on is, is um Sunday bric-a-brac markets. Because I think that's something else that Swaffham do from time to time. And people like that. People like a good rummage around, you know. Sort of pre-love stuff, if that's what you want to call it now. But again, one person can't do it if it's successful, so this would be support to it. The Tuesday is not, you know, I would see this person being the opening, getting them all settled. But not spend all his hours on the Tuesday because we've got most other staff members. For Saturday, they would have to be there longer, probably all day long, but that's not a bad thing either. So I think in principle, it's a good. It's a good, it's a good option. Because it's more than just the market. It's, it's doing things that we've talked about in the past in trying to make the spaces presentable.
Um. To add, to add to that, the way it works in Swaffham is that the person comes in, sets up the market, takes the money. Um. Takes the photographs, has a chat, sorts out the market traders. Then about ten o'clock, they go into the office, sit down. And sort out the social media and all the office work. Um. Have a break and then come back later on to sort. Yeah, that's, that's the way it works there and I would imagine it would be a similar-ish.
Yeah.
Sort of process here. Um. Can I, uh, can I chuck that out? Does anyone want to amend anything on there or are we gonna? Vote on pushing that to full council? None? Okay.
So I don't, is, is it affordable? Do we have the budget for it?
It's, so, okay, it's twenty, twenty grand there, prorata could be eight grand.
Yeah.
I, I think that would pay for itself fairly quickly.
I feel like it's a reactive investment on a prior basis, plus, I mean, as always, I mean, we've got an extra bit of negative form against. So, you know, for me, it seems reasonable.
I believe it's something we've got to do because we've got to show commitment to the market. No, right, you've just got to go with that and say, because we get a lot of grief saying we don't support the market so and so, then skip.
Whenever anyone talks about the market failing, it's always the council. Okay, I'm terrible.
David, has some, Alan, I know everyone asked us to say how this will be funded. Uh. Are we just going to present it for council?
So he hasn't, he hasn't said how he's, I mean, there are um two posts that weren't, that were um. People left the council and they weren't recruit, their replacements weren't recruited at the last budget setting. So you would have to go to full council to see whether there's the ability to um. Yeah, reinstate that role.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a twenty hour and a thirty-four hour role that were sort of suspended, if you like.
Yeah.
Um. But it just means from here to the end of this year, we need to find the money from somewhere. And then you can include it into budget setting for the following year. So, um, yeah, so you just. You need to propose and second a recommendation to agree, agree in principle the format. And recommend to full council.
The probability is it's only going to be half a year anyway, isn't it? Because by the time you recruit. Because obviously you've got to find the right candidates.
Can we put forward then, can I have a proposer and a seconder that we push this forward into full council for discussion? Mrs Harvey in Germy, thank you very much, votes for. Hence, you know. Uh. One eight two twenty-three venues capital projects to discuss. Priority venue maintenance and repairs projects. I think I'm going to have to chuck this at you.
Yeah, so, so at the end of last cohort, uh. This did come up as, as our, as our um desired priorities for the council. Um. But I think we need to bring these, we're, committees are bringing their priorities back to committee. Because there is such a high influx of new councillors, it's almost that they need to also ratify um the approach. In terms of the, these capital projects, a lot of it is just to commit to um either investigating. How we're going to do it, sourcing quotes and costs, uh, and also um. Some of it, and the, the Gildor clock tower is a classic example at the top of that list. We've got enough money to do what we're doing, which is basically scaffolding the building, making it safe. Taking off the clock tower because that's, that's what was decided, um, because it was cheaper to do it off-site and actually. To do it off-site would allow the, uh, the um contractors to have a more detailed assessment of. What repairs needed to be done, but we don't know how much it's going to cost to repair it, so we've got enough money to take it away. But we need to know what the cost will be very quickly because that is one that we haven't got the money for. We do need to, to apply for grants and the heritage master plan is one of those avenues that we can go down. So we need to know by the end of the year. The scaffolding's up finally because there's been such a prolonged process of disagreements in. How we're going to scaffold it. The first one came in at something like eighty-eight thousand pounds and it was the most. Massive horrendous scaffolding thing I've ever seen in my life. It would have, it would have um. Uh. Caused issues across the driveway between the Carnegie and Gildor because it extended that side. It would have extended halfway across the market square because they wanted to do it in situ, the repairs, which was silly. Now they're going to actually take it off and crane it away and the scaffolding, I think, is half that price, so it's forty-four thousand pounds. So we've got the money to do that bit. But we need them to do it quickly, to get it into the, into the workshop, do their assessment, find out how much it's going to cost so we can determine. Putting that into the bid for later in the year when we submit the heritage master plan grant, uh, application. So really, it's a case of just committing to that process and I think we have to because it's emergency repairs. If we do nothing. It's going to fall off. It literally is going to fall off the, the Gildor. Um. The other one, which is the Gildor heating. We've had our inspectors, uh, insurance inspectors around and they've basically condemned the system. The system is an antiquated um oil-based system. Uh. In recent months, we've replaced the seals around the extraction flue twice and they've lasted literally a month. Before you can smell the stuff that you're not supposed to. So we've had to turn the heating off. This time of year, it's okay. But clearly in the winter, it's not. So we're going to have to use temporary heating again like we did last uh year. Um. But again, it's something statutorily, they'll, they're, they're going to outlaw the, this particular boiler system anyway. So we have to start investigating alternatives. We've spoken to English Heritage to get their advice because it's a listed building. Uh. And they have said that the radiator system that we've got is id- ideal for those kind of buildings because. It provides uh an equal distribution of heating. But the system that supplies the radiator is not. So we have to look at alternatives. So we're going to ask for some expert advice. In fact, we were surprised that they did say the air source system that we have in the Carnegie. Which also includes air cooling, which is great because it gets quite sticky and stuffy in there. Um. Is applicable to the listed um status of the building. But we do have to be sympathetic in how we put the units up, certainly on the exterior. If you are able to climb up onto the flat roof between the Gildor, Large Court, Gable End and the Royal British Legion. The Royal British Legion have got some units in there and actually their external extraction unit or intake units are hidden away. So we can put some, some units for the guild hall on that side. But that's something we need to investigate the cost, so that could be an action that comes out of this. Uh. In terms of the guild hall windows and exterior walls, we've done some testing over several years of some cracks in the exterior. They haven't moved. So I think it's safe to say that basically aesthetically, we need to rake and fill those. So they're not going to be susceptible to frost damage and things to make it even worse. But the windows, as we've seen with the dormer window above the porch. We left that to the extent that that's now having to, well, it has been removed. It's now being um repaired. To be um installed again in the, in the very near future. But to leave it is costly. It's not cheap to rectify, but I think again. We need to instigate some investigation as to what windows can be um. Uh. Saved, if you like, in terms of um repair before we have to go down that route of the costly um. Replacement. But the little slide on the, on the screen at the moment shows you, that's the T-room uh room. And the problem with the Gildor is there's so many blooming windows. Um. It's just, you know, if we leave it that we've got to replace, it's going to cost us an absolute fortune. So costs for repair, assessment for repair need to be, to be done ASAP. And then we need to determine an action plan to get those repaired. And the final one is the marketplace. Um. But I think we're, we're, we're going down the right route in terms of the marketplace, in terms of some of the stuff that we're doing. Um. There is money to improve it even further. Uh. And one of the biggest things that would transform the marketplace is the resurfacing. And not wanting to say too much in a public meeting, we are um. We're in negotiations, if you like, with someone that might be helping us with um resurfacing the market at, at minimal cost. So hopefully, um, that might. That might actually be concluded satisfactorily. So that will be good. Um. But again, you know, we just need to, to look at it and, and decide exactly what we, what we're doing with the marketplace. It will determine on whether weather soon space stays. There is talk of eventually putting in the master plan, um, the improvement of the war memorial and moving all the plaques into one area. But creating a more uh, a memorial mini space park. A pocket park or whatever in that corner to um. So there's lots of ideas, but uh. To cut a long story short, we haven't got the money to do uh most of it, but we need to investigate the costs so we can, we can source um grant funding if it's out there. So the first thing is um, is basically, and it's not, it's not a big decision, it's just. Um. A commitment from this committee to uh, to continue to um look at those four areas. For as our priorities.
Chris.
Are the electrics in the market?
So the electrics, again, long story, we've now finally got through to uh our, so. I thought the biggest issue would be UK Power Networks, but Sparkex, who, who was our contractor, dealt with all that and it went swimmingly and we got it done. And then blow me, they said, you know, you can't use it until obviously you've installed a meter. I can't understand why our utility provider doesn't want to install a meter at short notice because as soon as he does that, he'll be charging us. So, you know, they must be making a lot of money, that company, because they don't want a new customer. But we've now got a job reference. Um. We got that job reference uh six weeks ago, four weeks ago. And they tell, tell me that the absolute outside, it could, it, it's in a timeframe of twelve weeks. I obviously said I wanted it done yesterday. I wanted it done by the end of June because it's going to impact on some of our events. But they've given a commitment to get it done within twelve weeks. So we're four, six weeks away, hopefully. And then once that's in, it's all there. It just needs to be metered to make it legal. So um. Honestly, you know, the problem with these companies is you, you do not have an account manager. So every time I contact them, I'm going through. A sort of generic email like Mail at Thetford Town Council. I, you know, I have the generic and then it gets passed on internally to account provider, but when you want to answer. You can't answer them direct, you have to answer through the, but now I've got a job reference. Um. Hopefully it will shortcut those communications. Um. And we'll get a date of installation um very soon. The biggest thing I'm worried about is they're going to come back and say, oh, we can fit it on the tenth of August, which is slap banging in the middle of Seaside Special. And then we'll be torn as to whether, you know, we get it done or we ask for a different date. But that's not changing. I know, it is.
Cherry. Um. The one that I was uh nervous about uh for a number of reasons is the clock tower.
Yeah.
Because the decision we made at full council was a set sum of money, uh, then a thousand pound a week thereafter. Uh. For scaffolding. Um. And knowing how long everything takes and there's always delays, you know, we are committed. Uh. And, you know, the last thing I want is us, you know, essentially running out of money and how do we keep funding scaffolding? Is the plan to take it down, do, and once the clock tower's down, take the scaffolding down and then do the repairs and get it up? Because that, from what you were saying, if we don't have the money to do the clock tower. Last thing we want to do is lead the staff on it up, but we're going to put it back up again, put the clock tower back up.
Yeah, so, so really, it, we have to make that decision in it. In my view, within, so we need to push them to make an assessment really, really quickly.
Yeah.
We get a free um, we get a free hire of the scaffolding, if you like, for the first ten weeks.
Yeah.
So we must have some costs and then we can determine how long it's going to take. If that clock tower is going to be off for eighteen months, for instance. Then there may be a argument to take it down.
Yeah.
And then what we can do is get the repairs done and put in the, in the grant application. The erection of the scaffolding because to put it back up, you're going to need to have the scaffolding back up. So we might be able to do it that way. If it's own, if it's not as bad as we thought, and I'm, I think it's, it is as bad as what we thought. Uh. And it's only, um, you know, three months, six months or something like that, and it might be worth paying the additional money. I think set aside was about fifty thousand pounds, so we've almost got that sixteen-week window. So we do have to, once it's off and gone, we do need to make them do the assessment and the costing really, really quickly and we can make that decision then. Personally, um. I think it's going to take a long time, but if that's the case, that scaffolding internally certainly got to come down.
Yeah.
Because it's horrendous. We just can't operate like that.
That, that's kind of my view and I'm very conscious that it will drag on and on and we need to be clear on, you know, what the different stages are. Um. I'm not sure. The wording of the recommendation, how it is what we're essentially agreeing tonight. Um. We, we don't have a choice about those four priorities. They are priorities. But we're not in a position because we don't have any costs to order them or put a timeline on them or do anything. Other than say, yeah, we know they've got a load of work, work to do.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that, that decision required is worded wrongly. I don't, like, as you say, we can't do that. What, what we, what we can do as a committee is, is scale that back a little bit and say, look, we understand these are our priorities. And um the investigate, and the action plan is to investigate um costs. And the degree of repair or, or, or reparation that we need to do on these four things.
Yeah.
And come back to committee uh the earliest with those costs so we can determine how we take them further forward.
Yeah.
We can't go to council with nothing because literally we haven't, we haven't anything.
Yeah, as good, as good as your explanation for all the um four items and as much as you say. It, speed is of the essence. I don't think we can really do much with this. I, I think we have to defer it really, don't we?
Yeah.
Um. Bring, bring it back at the next committee meeting and see where we get.
With, with the action that we, we, we get those costs. So my job is now to go, go out and find those, find out what those costs are for. The heating and the windows, et cetera.
Just one other point. Yeah, in, in the past, as a council, we've had a number of officers that are. Um. Were particularly good at writing uh funding bids. Do we have the staff that can write these funding bids? That's my other concern. I don't think, I don't think we've got the capacity or the skill set. To write the bids to fund some of these projects.
No, so, so that's why when we um appointed the consultants for the heritage master plan, we was very specific. That included in that price, they would write the bid. What we do have to do as a council is make sure they're writing a bid that we want. So I think that at some point in the next few months, we need to invite them into a, to a um, a physical meeting. And we need to determine what the consultation has said, you know, what. What do the people want? How are we going to frame our bid? Is it going to be, you know, appropriate to try to ask for those costs, et cetera? Um. So in this essence, in this ti- uh time, we've got an expert to do it. But you're right, Terry, you know, in the past, and we know who that employee was, and she was very successful. Um. But we haven't the expertise in the building at the moment that can do that. The town clerk is, is currently investigating. The town clerk is is currently investigating um some options for grants and things. And I, you know, we can have a stab, but you know what it's like, funding is very, very tight at the moment. You do need an expert to do it because you're gonna be, I mean, we've seen, we've seen with the. At at local authority level that has got those expertise, they've missed out on big funding bids, so. It's 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 a hard job to try and get it, so we do need to find someone who can do that.
Yeah. And with um capital projects, obviously a bit smaller scale than these four. But the MTI funded works, also Chris mentioned the um sockets, was there anything else? Was it a package of stuff? There was some lights.
There's one, so there's one, the lights, the lights will go up, uh so the lights have been purchased, so we've got those. Um the one thing that's missing is the gates and um. But Andrew Gate, and I've spoken to Andrew Gate, and so there has to be a planning application that goes in for that and it has to be tweaked. Uh that some of the conversations, so we've got to tweak that slightly, um but that's uh that's imminent. Um, so hopefully they will, from from a staff and health and safety point of view. They need to be in place before this person gets the post because he'll have to, he or she will last two weeks and go, I'm not pulling those bollards out. As much as I love that particular employee um for her successful uh bids. She did purchase those bollards and every Saturday and Tuesday, I absolutely, you know, curse that person. Because they were built to stop a tank, believe me. Um.
Can we move one of them down to the entrance to King Street sometime now?
Yeah. But yeah, the gates are imminent, they are, um they're, you know, they're gonna be really nice.
Okay, then, if there are no more questions, now, um. I I guess I've got to uh ask for a proposal in a second that we defer this to find out more information about each item. Fair.
Oh, I see.
Thank you, Chris, thank you. Um one eight three twenty three, community engagement. To discuss and agree any consultation or media release required.
Anything we've agreed to know.
All right, okay.
Is there anything at the moment we want released?
No, but I think we should have something ready for uh after full council. Um assuming they adopt the proposal about market coordinator. I think it's really good news that we as a council are investing in our market.
Yeah, I I I agree. Um would that also include something about the business with the ticket office? With the ticketing offices, uh which were?
Oh, yeah, that full council made the decision and press release about that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, actually, we need to get better at wrapping press releases, but.
You know, I don't think there's any harm in that, is there?
There's an agenda, I don't know if Hayes on David, you know, but there's an agenda to next Tuesday at full council. About a town council response to the consultation about train station ticket offices, so we'll be submitting a response. Uh again, um but the deadline for the consultation closes on the Wednesday after full council, so that needs to be done quite quickly.
Yes.
It was quite beautiful.
It was, it was really good.
One thing I would say about press releases is can we get a timeline on this because obviously I've had someone come back from amenities with the list already. Which is lovely, but I kind of went, how long have I got to do this? Because I've got three hours before I go home, but it's just. And I know obviously we've looked at it in the media policy, they said there is a thing about within two days, but what, we need to look at what happens if I'm on holiday or someone else. Just just have a quick timeline, some things will need to go straight away, but some of the letters need to be received by the person before we publish and things like that, so.
If only we had a journalist on the town council.
I know, right?
I think there's a balance, Lee, because we, of course, it's important to prep. But we also don't want to assume that council's gonna adopt something, but um I think there's a bit more certainty on things being approved at full council. Nowadays, so um it's much more beneficial to prep stuff, so.
Um, so I guess that is uh that is ticked off. And one eight four twenty three to update any information since the agenda was released, I don't think there is any, so. We're done, thank you very much.